I call this regular meeting of Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is May 18th and we are in the Board of Education meeting room. I'd like to recognize all of our visitors in the room and online. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. We can do that first, we can just do that first and then they can come in and do the National Anthem.
Okay.
That's okay, so we'll just do it together. Nope, we'll just start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then can we invite the high school choir in?
Sure. And now I would like to invite the Watkins Memorial High School Choir to play the new National Anthem. Is that correct?
It's the National Anthem.
Yes. Done. Sure.
And then you're gonna say, "Hey Kenny, for all murder." It's a Watkins tradition to grab the hand of the neighbor, but I mean, no pressure. I guess we all, we're all supposed to love each other, right? So grab the hand, don't play the guitar.
I don't want to hold hands. I don't like touching people. Thank you. Good job, guys.
Well, less than 36 hours before my kid graduates, now I'm crying already. So, thank you for that. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore. Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Zini.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here. We have one person for public participation. It is Tanya Moore.
Did I just take my address?
It's here.
Well, I just wanted to take a moment, and I'm not going to cry. As today marks a significant, nope, I'm gonna cry. Moment in my career, as tonight my reputation is on the board agenda. After two decades of serving in this district, I have some things I want to share. First off, I want everybody to know, I'm leaving on a positive note. My relationships here mean the world to me. But this is a step for me that I'm very excited about. So I don't know if you know, 21 years ago, I started student teaching here in Nikki Houston's classroom. Been in a lot of placements, you know, in your college career, but I knew I wanted to work here. Bill Bremer walked by, he was like, "Do you want to work here?" I was like, "Yes." He said, "Stop by my office, you're hired." So here I was, that's how the interview process went. Been here 20 years, 10 years in the classroom, five years in the building administration, and five years as the Director of Curriculum. And I have witnessed so many amazing things here. The transformative power of the education in this district is amazing. We have so many options for kids, and I'm so thankful that my kids go here. I just want to say one thing about collaboration and communication and about our teachers. We have parents that reach out to me all the time in my role, talking about how much their kids have grown, and our teachers go above and beyond. We have teachers packing take-home food bags during their free time, so our kids have food at home. We have teachers doing after-school tutoring to help our struggling students. We have teachers bringing in deodorant, because kids need it at school. We have teachers attending sporting events, dance recitals, all of those things to build the community with our families. And these teachers go above and beyond every day. They don't ask for acknowledgement, they don't ask for trade hours, they don't ask for money. They do it because they care about the kids in our community. And I am so, so thankful for those teachers and thankful that I've been able to work with them over the past 20 years. In closing, I just want to express my deepest gratitude. I know that the torch is being passed into super capable hands. And I also just want to take a moment to point out what an excellent superintendent this district has. Not only as a friend and as a colleague, but I can only hope in my next adventure that I work with somebody like Dr. Perkins. And I hope everybody in this district realizes that, that every decision in this district is truly made in the best interest of kids. And I'm not gonna read anymore, because I'm just gonna keep crying. So thank you, thank you for allowing all of our crazy ideas to be approved over the past 20 years and letting us do what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I could say something profound, but I will just keep crying. So, thank you for your 21 years of service to our district, Tanya, Mrs. or Dr. Moore. Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Presentations. We have a presentation for a very special teacher who is retiring. So I'd like to invite Mrs. Mary Jo Zini up here, to the front.
Who's coming? Who's? Who's speaking?
Is someone here that would like to speak?
Yeah, so someone's coming, someone's coming.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service, and we're gonna hear some nice words. So I've had the privilege of working with Mary Jo for 11 years at Pataskala. I've enjoyed getting to know her, hearing about her incredibly interesting life. One lucky year, we were teamed together, and I remember feeling nervous because Mary Jo had quite an amazing reputation, and I was newly back into the field of teaching. She made me feel welcome, she supported me, always shared ideas and resources. Do remember in particular, one of our first parent-teacher conferences. We had some concerns to share, and we weren't sure how those concerns were going to be received. But Mary Jo began, and before I knew it, we had a plan in place, we had a follow-up meeting scheduled. Everyone was smiling, and I was just in awe of how she was able to communicate so intentionally, but with kindness and respect. I have many fond memories, but one that sticks out is a time when we were at an event, an intermediate school. A high school student was there and recognized Mary Jo and just beaming, ran up to her. And she was so shocked, first off, that Mary Jo remembered her face and also her name. But her next statement was, "You got me to love math, Mrs. Zini, thank you." And I thought, what an impact she made on that student's life and all of the other students that she has taught. Mary Jo has that unique ability to reach deep inside her students and find their hidden strengths. She never gives up on students and believes passionately in their futures. Pataskal Elementary won't be the same without a teacher like Mary Jo. She has touched the lives and inspired so many students while making lasting impressions. However, it isn't just her students who have benefited. It is also the teachers and staff she has worked alongside. She is a mentor, a helping hand, a source of support, and a friend. She is that teacher, after a rough day, you can close the classroom door, get everything off your chest, and share a laugh. Just don't park in her parking space. For those of you who don't know, it is a self-claimed spot in the front of our building. It has provided plenty of opportunity or entertainment to me over the years to arrive at school and see who has courage to park in Mrs. Zini's place.
That's funny.
Most of the time, her car was already filling the spot because she arrives at school when most of us are still in bed. Mary Jo, a teacher like you can never really retire. You may stop coming to school, but you will continue to inspire your students every day as a retired.
You'd really like to sit down with me. When I first met Mary Jo many years ago, I was teaching at At-Nine, she was teaching at Pataskala. So our third-grade teams would get together during two-hour delays and waiver days. And in those brief encounters, I quickly drew two conclusions about Mary Jo. Number one, we seem to share the same teaching philosophy. And number two, I remember thinking, "This lady is a class act." She had a great way of respectfully disagreeing with someone or spinning information into a perspective that maybe we had not considered. I greatly admired her calm approach to others, both staff members and students. Fast forward to grade banding, and then we began to work closely together. And she agreed to join a book study that I organized. And the book was Wish Tree, which is a targeted juvenile audience, nothing too, you know, stressful. And Mary Jo confessed, probably at our last meeting, that she had to stop reading it in the second-to-last chapter because she was just too worried that the tree would get cut down. And that little story should tell you everything you need to know about her heart. She is a true empath when it comes to nature and animals and kids. Don't you dare tell her a sad animal story, or she'll be up all night. Or a potentially sad tree story, for that matter. And the tree did live, by the way, which she was relieved to find out. Mary Jo and I were chosen to teach remotely for the 2020-21 school year, and so we bonded over this unique experience. And when we returned to in-person learning, she and I became teaching partners. Which brings us to the present day, and let me tell you, she has gone out with a bang. She has been creating new and creative experience for our students for the past two years. When she had every right to just keep it simple and coast into retirement, instead, our students have been creating marble roller coasters in science and polygon creatures in math. They're hatching chicks and watching butterflies emerge. She's contacted half of downtown Pataskala so that our third graders can experience all our community has to offer. She makes our students feel valued, appreciated, and loved. And she embraces and celebrates the diversity of all of our students. And after all these years, those two conclusions I drew about Mary Jo still hold true. We still share the same teaching philosophy, and she certainly is and always will be a class act. Love you.
Roger, will you join us for a picture?
Sure.
I'm inviting Roger to the picture.
Roger and Kathy are gonna come up too.
Congratulations.
Are you taking a picture? Okay. Roger, one, two, three. We're good. I was waiting on Roger's kind words.
First lady, her day starts at 5:00 in the morning. Sometimes I yawn and sometimes I sleep in. But she gets up at 5:00 every morning and walks with our two lovely dogs that we have. And then from there, she gets ready, and by 7:00, she's out the door, ready to go teach. So she's an amazing baby.
Congratulations, and thank you again for your service. Gosh, is there any more emotional stuff today? Okay. We have a presentation from Pataskal Elementary.
Good evening, some hard ass to follow. But tonight, we want to start with a short highlight video from Pataskal. It is a great day to be a Lion. Tonight, we get the pleasure of sharing all the amazing things that take place at Pataskal Elementary. First, I would like to give a shout-out to my staff, yes, even the ones that are here tonight, who show up every day with the number-one goal of loving kids. They're the best in the biz, they provide our students with consistency, structure, and experiences that they will remember forever. So when I reflect back on the school year, I kind of like to highlight the activities and experiences that we were able to provide our students due to the support of parents, community members, and agencies, and the district as a whole.
All right, so we're gonna start with the Watchdog Program. So the other elementary buildings also participate in the Watchdog Program, and we were able to have that as well at Pataskal. So we would like to thank all of the male father figures who volunteered their time by spending the day with us. The best part of the Watchdog Program is them coming into the office at the end of the day and being exhausted. And they are just like, "All right, I'm ready to go home and take a nap." All right, our Warrior Mentors. This was a program that we set up with the high school, also in the elementary buildings. We were very honored to have Mr. Ethan, Ms. Olivia, and Ms. Murphy volunteer in our buildings every day. They played such a positive role in all of our students' daily routines. Our students counted on them being there, and I know those relationships and memories will last for a very, very long time. So that was a great partnership that we had this year. We had many opportunities to collaborate with the middle school and the high school. So one of them was with the theater. So the theater classes from the middle school created and performed plays for our students that aligned with our PBIS program and expectations. Students in Mrs. Plant's eighth-grade science class came to the building with books that they illustrated to share with our first graders, teaching them about weathering, erosion, and deposition. And also with the middle school agriculture program, our third graders will be visiting them next week to learn about pollinators and sustainability. And they'll be able to plant some seeds that will be ready to harvest in the fall. All right, our 12 Days of Giving, just head up by Mrs. Gold, Mrs. Gold back there. This was across all three elementary buildings as well. We were able to gather lots of donations from each building that were donated to leads to help Looking County residents. Those are some of our Lion Leaders that went around and helped collect all those items for us. Our salt readers from the high school came to read to our second graders recently during our literacy week. They all came and read, answered lots of hysterical questions, which they debriefed about for a while, and then provided all of our second graders with a new book as well.
As part of Fire Safety Week, the West Looking Fire Department came to teach our students about fire safety. The firefighters even took the time to take students out to view a fire truck and to teach them about all the equipment, and that's always a big hit with our kids. Deputy Brill taught safety lessons to our kindergarten and second-grade students this year. He also does a really great job of coming over when he's available to the building to be visible and to get to know our students. Mr. Ronderry presents the Good Program to second-grade students every year. He encourages students to have good attendance, listening skills, work habits, and citizenship. The Pataskal Rotary Club donates a dictionary to every third-grade student each year, and we'd like to send a big thank you to the Rotary Club for providing these for our kids. Mayor Compton has been in to talk to several classes about how local government works and also gave tips to students about public speaking. The next slide. For some community partnerships, the Looking County Health Department was just in to teach our third-grade students about concussion safety. And as part of this program, all third-grade students receive a free bike helmet. This year through partnership with the Healthy Kids Network, we were able to provide shelf-stable food for over 30 students on a weekly basis. And the Pataskal United Methodist Church also matches that number over winter and spring breaks, winter and spring breaks, so students have extra food during those times. Just recently, we had the Ohio Dental Outreach Mobile Dentist Group come into the building to provide preventative dental care for 60 students. We were thrilled with that amount of, with the amount of students that we were able to serve and plan to continue that partnership each year if we can. And last but not least, our PTO is absolutely fantastic. This year, they purchased a new keyboard for a music teacher, provided several teachers with mini-grants for classroom projects, purchased recess equipment, and ensured we had volunteers and materials for various events in the building. So to kind of bring this full circle for you guys, tonight we are able to share about the many people and groups that go above and beyond to make sure our students have a memorable school experience, hear positive messages, and leave every day knowing that they're cared about. At Pataskal, when we have a student who goes above and beyond our expectations, they receive what we call a paw of pride. When a student earns a paw of pride, their name gets announced over the loudspeaker, and they get to go to the top floor to ring the Pataskal bell. Students absolutely love this recognition. So I want to thank each of you on behalf of Pataskal Elementary for your support, for going above and beyond for our school district, and would like to present each of you tonight with a paw of pride. We would also like to invite you to Pataskal any day, within the next six days, to join us in ringing the bell and recognizing all that you do. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of excited about ringing the bell, though. You might have all five of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pataskal Elementary. Next up, we have the Early Learning Center, our ELC, with their presentation. In likely special gets, I'm guessing.
On H-E-A P-P-Y, I'm H-E-A P-P-Y. And I'll lay a mature head, I'm H-E-A P-P-Y. With just one small voice singing out a song. With just one small voice singing sweet and strong. One by one they'll grow. And together sing along. And then soon, all the world will be singing. With just one small voice singing out a song. With just one small voice singing sweet and strong. One by one they'll grow. And together sing along. And then soon, all the world will be singing. With just one, all the world will be singing.
Thank you guys so much. You did such a good job.
Are we all done? Yes, are we all done?
Are they presenting too? What was that? Okay, so is someone speaking about school or no?
I, I, I don't think she is, that's it. Mackenzie's not speaking, is she? No, that's okay.
I'm just waiting for...
Yeah.
All right, we now move on to item three, requests to speak on agenda items. Any Teamsters Local 413? Southwest Looking Education Association?
Yes, please. Get the pleasure of appearing in a second board meeting in a row. Janie Trenish, second Vice President of Southwest Looking Education Association. I am not gonna be that cute, ever again. So you are stuck with me, sorry I didn't prepare this as a song, also. You just get to hear me ramble on. So I would like to speak to you tonight on behalf of our members regarding Agenda Item 7B, the Dyslexia Intervention and Supports, which was coded IGBB. The law requires that all kindergarten and first-grade teachers be trained by the beginning of the 23-24 school year, second- and third-grade teachers trained by the beginning of the 24-25 school year, and that all 4-12 intervention specialists be trained by the beginning of the 25-26 school year. According to the district outline, all required teachers and intervention specialists will be trained before the start of the 23-24 school year. That's extraordinary. They didn't have to do it until 25-26, but it's getting done according to the outline by the beginning of next school year. So how did that happen? Teachers were introduced to the district's initiative regarding the dyslexia law at our November professional development gathering. Amy Dennison and Dr. Moore gave us an overview of the law and the required training for all of the teachers and intervention specialists. We then attended several sessions, learning a variety of components that were necessary for reading with at least 95% accuracy, which is a goal of the science of reading and the dyslexia law. It was an informative and productive day. The training is completed online through the Ohio Department of Education Learning Management System, and it's comprised of 11 modules with an estimated 18 hours to complete the training. So at first, teachers hear that, they're automatically saying, how in the world am I going to fit that into my day? However, the district provided a minimum of 19 hours for the educators to complete the training. Members were given time on professional development days and during our TBT meetings, which are about a half an hour a week, to complete the 11 modules. There were only two items that were scheduled to be completed outside the contractual day. That was the pre-assessment, which had to be completed before January 13th, and the post-assessment, which has to be completed before July 31st. I'm not sure of the numbers for how many have completed everything so far, but I know there's quite a few who just kept going with it just so that the learning was, was continuous. However, being trained on how to identify the characteristics of dyslexia was not enough to achieve positive results. The district had to research and implement a new program aligned with the science of reading. For this reason, the 95 Phonics Core Program was approved at the March 16th board meeting at a cost of nearly $100,000. The program's replacing foundations as our Tier One program. 95 Phonics Core encompasses not only the decoding and encoding, but writing, morphology, vocabulary, and writing, so it's an all-encompassing program. We're thrilled that the district's providing the training for this program during our contractual time as well. So thank you very much to the board and to Dr. Moore. I know you played an important role in making sure that we had that time provided to us. We would also like to express our enthusiasm regarding the, hopefully soon-to-be-approved appointment of Dr., of Dr., Mr. Dustin Cullen as the new principal at Watkins High School. We would also like to extend our appreciation to the school board for taking our concerns into consideration and involving the community, teachers, and staff in the hiring process. Although the process was limited, we believe it marks a positive step towards transparency and hiring administrative staff within our district. Moreover, we're delighted to welcome new additions to our administrative team from different districts. We firmly believe that embracing a diversity of voices and experiences is crucial for the growth and success of any organization. We sincerely hope that Mr. Cullen will forge strong connections with our teachers, staff, and community. The changing needs of the future demand that we revamp our current high school program to be innovative and adaptable. By incorporating cutting-edge educational strategies and personalized approaches, we can effectively cater to the diverse needs of our students, making the most of the four years that we have with them, some ending this Saturday. It is our responsibility to equip our students with the necessary skills, knowledge, and resilience to thrive in an ever-evolving world. By maximizing our time with students, our revamped program will empower them to become forward-thinking problem solvers, lifelong learners, and successful contributors to society. Providing our students and community with this kind of four-year education is essential, and we firmly believe that Mr. Cullen will play a pivotal role in leading the transformation of our high school programs. Finally, we would like to respectfully ask that the board work on publishing a complete agenda at least 48 hours prior to the board meeting to allow us time and our community members to review to be able to voice any concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, approval of minutes from the April 25th special board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item five, financial report.
Motion to approve?
Second. Mr. Jones?
Glued on agenda is the executive summary for end of April 2023. We did receive our final income tax settlement for the year, and it came in about $312,000 higher than we anticipated. So overall, we were up about 16% over last year on income tax collections. But that's very good. Everything else was fairly routine, and nothing really had an ordinary, just the income tax, I wanted to point out, was up very well. Be glad to answer any specific questions we may have.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item six, personnel consent. We have A through L.
Motion to approve A through L?
Second.
Anything to note?
I, I did want to introduce Dustin Cullen, who is here this evening. He will be joining us as the new high school principal. He comes from Gehanna as a current assistant principal. We are very, very excited to be welcoming him here as part of our team.
We're excited myself, too.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And that's all I have on personnel consent.
Anybody have anything to add? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item seven, business items. We have A through H. Do we need to pull anything out?
Motion seven, A through H. Second.
So, letter A is just an addition of the kindergarten screening that was left off the initial calendar that we do every year. So, that's a pretty simple one. I don't know if anyone has anything with the policies. We discussed them last time, so I don't think there's anything substantially changed for those. We have the athletic and band handbook. If you have any questions regarding those two?
I have, I just have one comment.
Sure.
I don't want it to, I don't know how it's going to come across, but I'm going to say it anyways. On the athletic handbook, on page seven, there's a list of things students should, and the very top one is believe participation is more important than winning, which I 100% agree with in normal circumstances. However, as a district that charges pay to participate, I think in the high school athletic handbook, there is a line between what you're working towards and what a parent might think that they were going to be paying to participate, if that's the top goal. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Because I think as a, as, as a district, our goal for our varsity sports is, in fact, probably winning, I would think. And, you know, our freshman JV middle school are all development programs, and that, you know, participation is more important at that point. But as you get to the varsity level, I think the goal is probably winning at that point.
We can, we can take a look at that.
Want to tweak at that, maybe?
Sure.
Look at that.
Absolutely. Anything else on either of those handbooks?
Just the, on page three, it's just reflective of the district leadership presently, but district leadership will change over the summer and, at least for curriculum instruction, and we will change that as well.
Sure, I mean, our current, our current curriculum director is still our current curriculum director.
Absolutely.
So, but yes, as we transition, and the changes will be made.
Fantastic.
Yes, absolutely. Anything else on those two? Rick, do you want to talk about the energy sales agreement?
Yeah, so we've been with Power for Schools for three years. It's a cooperative with schools buying electricity, so just asking the board to renew that agreement for another three years.
And then we have a couple overnight trips. One is in June with our Envirethon competition team, and then the other one is for our high school band and choir for next spring break, going to Disney. So, I'm super excited. They need to get that on here early so they can start planning, pending your approval. Oh, just banned. Choir is already approved, so there you go. And then, letter G, discussion on a land transfer to Reynoldsburg School District. So, as you're aware, we've been working, Rick and I, the last 18 months with Reynoldsburg Schools on the Eastwood Development on Route 40. That's Reynoldsburg City, but our school district. So, after Rick and I have met with three, four, I'm trying to remember how many superintendents from Reynoldsburg, we, we came to a, a point where we've disagreed, where we're not going to agree. So, at this point, the school district was employed to file a petition with ODE to transfer the land there. Over the process of the months that have drag on through this process of the changing of the superintendency in Reynoldsburg, we unfortunately, the landowners have shifted, additional parcels have been sold, and so the original signatures that we had from the landowners are not valid anymore, and now we need new signatures. So our attorneys have been working on that the last couple of months, and we've hit a little bit of a roadblock. So, in order to obtain signatures of all of the currently in owners to file with ODE prior to them starting to build and sell, which then we'd have to have the owner, the signatures of the owners of the homes and businesses, they, they would like to seek out, asking the board if they would consider changing our, writing a letter saying we'd be willing to change the TIF for the Drayton Hall development from 20 years to 10.
10 to 20.
I'm sorry?
10 to 20.
10 to 20, sorry, thank you. So they're, they're asking the board if you'd be willing to write a letter. They fully realize that the board writing that letter doesn't mean it's actually going to change. They know they have to have the Aetna Township as well as water and sewer. However, they believe with the backing of the board that they might be able to sway the other entities involved. Rick and I have asked for, for our attorney to, and this all came about in the last 48 hours, so unfortunately, we haven't, we don't have all the answers tonight, but we have asked them to, if they would be, consider if we said, if the board was willing to do that, only if OD sided with Southwest Licking Schools and took those students to Reynoldsburg as opposed to our school district, then would we agree to the change in the TIF. So Rick can talk a little bit more about logistics if you want, but that's, that's the basic.
So we actually asked him what he needed the change for, and they mentioned it was mainly infrastructure for themselves. Approximately, they say about $3.5 million with the infrastructure, but the TIF supposedly only brings in about $3 million over the 10 years, and supposedly 25% of that $3 million goes to the township, so they get less than that. So part of the extension from 10 to 20 would essentially double the amount of money and would guarantee their reimbursement for their infrastructure costs, sewer, so forth, and that housing complex. It's called Drayton Hall.
Just for those who are in the audience who may not know, can you let everyone know where Drayton Hall is located?
It just, it's undeveloped right now. It's just at, right above 40 and 310. Is it, do you know the exact location?
Yeah, it's near the Cumberland. I think the thing's on here.
Yeah, it's across from Cumberland.
It's across the, from the, from the Cumberland.
Yeah, the entrance to Cumberland.
It is Langels Farm.
It's Langels Farm, okay, so yeah.
Off 310.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't know that until we saw exactly where it was at and what was happening with it, but, so that's, the gentleman sent an email to our attorney, and, you know, I can send it to you about what, but his main concern was covering their infrastructure cost.
Is the, Southwest Licking Water and Sewer participating in that TIF as well, or do you know?
I don't think so, but I don't know. That was my first question, was, is the reason for the 20 because of Southwest Licking Sewer? Based on his email, it doesn't, sewer is part of it, but it's other infrastructure costs, too. They were indicating, they talked about parks and stuff. If you want to look at the email or anything.
Oh, just send it to us.
Okay. So, it's not like I'm asking, we're asking to vote or anything, just want to see if your willingness to consider it. If not, then probably we're out to keep Reynoldsburg kid. That Reynoldsburg City land that's in our school district, we're out to keep it because I don't know that the state would approve it without the owner signing off on it, or very unlikely.
So I, I don't, I don't get the connection between 40 and 310 and then the Reynoldsburg. I was getting right asked.
Same developer.
It's the same developer now, right? It's the same developer. Okay. I was like, how does the Drayton Hall relate to the Reynoldsburg?
Yeah, it's, yeah, finds out it's the same developer.
That's what it's the same developer, right?
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it is, it is fairly timely because what happened in the shift over of, in their school district has caused us now to have to go back, and, and they're already, I mean, they've broken ground, so I don't know how quickly things will go up, but...
What sort of consent do they need? Is there a percentage? Is it unanimous?
They want to go to 70% for 20 years.
Do you mean of the...
I'm talking the, the people who live...
I think we need to get all of them?
No, I thought he said 70. I think it's 70 or 75, yeah. But in this case, what's happening is the, the individual leading the charge, the others will not sign without his signature. So without his signature, we get no other signatures.
But the writer will say only if?
Well, that's what we're asking.
We want to make a contention upon, basically, the land being actually switched to Reynoldsburg Schools, because there's nothing for us if it doesn't.
Yeah, because if it doesn't happen, and OD sides with Reynoldsburg Schools, then it's a moot point.
Your thoughts, or...
Is Reynoldsburg Schools aware of this? I mean, obviously, it's public now, but...
I mean, honestly, we haven't been in communication with them since they...
Since they told us that they agreed to take the land, so...
How much is it, how much would it cost to educate those Reynoldsburg kids?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research with Rick to figure out.
I think our cost is like a little over $10,000 per student, and it was going to be like 300 and some students, 350 maybe? That's per year.
The developments are, in planning, are at least different, where you've got small family homes in the Reynoldsburg location.
Small family, single-family townhomes, apartments.
And so on and so forth, whereas I believe Drayton Hall is just apartment-like.
Condos, maybe?
I thought, I thought it was that hotel. I thought it was the...
They called it long-term hotel, I think, which is how they got the zoning through.
Yeah.
So in the scheme of probably numbers of children, just going, Reynoldsburg property would probably have substantially more children, correct?
Yes.
But it's not a one or the other thing? It's not, it's not. No, 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 no. No, they're both developments.
They're both happening.
Right. Yeah, they're both, they're all common, but in, in theory, we could, with this, even though it makes you feel kind of slimy. Kinda? I mean, it is, it's kind of like how business seems to be done out here, but...
It's, I don't know. The whole thing, all along, has just been frustrating. Because we're just kind of told how things are going to be for us, and, you know, we don't get a lot of say. And then when we do get say, money is pooled, and, you know, it's, the kids are the ones held in the middle, which is too bad.
Yep.
But I'm fine with us pursuing that because, I mean, this is going to mediate our growth if we can get Reynolds, those kids into Reynoldsburg City Schools, because 350 kids, that's half an elementary school that we don't have right now. So I think it's, the worst thing that could happen is they say no, they're ours anyway.
Correct.
So to me, it's worth the shot.
I agree with you. I, yeah, I, I think we have to at least sort of try to pursue it with that.
And I would also add, I think it would be helpful and beneficial if Aetna were to speak on our behalf to the city of Reynoldsburg and Reynoldsburg Schools to see if we can get some backing and support that way as well. Because the more people that are in line with this and in favor of this, I, I just think that's a win-win for everybody. Because again, I do, it just, I scratch my head with the little hair that I have, and I'm thinking, these people are driving past Reynoldsburg Schools to come to ours. That makes zero sense to me. So that's just, I don't know, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I do kind of feel passionate about this one.
I would like to see if our attorney could maybe think of any other, and I don't even know what this would be, securities for us. I don't know what he could come up with, but something in addition, if we're, if we're willing to do this, are there any other safeguards that we can put into place with any future annexation?
We can ask.
The growth is real.
That is an excellent point. This is more.
Okay, nothing else on that, then? All right, so we'll go ahead and let our, our attorney know and... All right, so we'll go ahead and let our, our attorney know, and we'll kind of go from there, and I'll keep the board apprised of what's happening. And then last, under business items, is Patasko Elementary Therapy Dog. So Patasko currently, Ms. Winagel, I believe she's here, I think so, right? Yep, she's back there, has purchased a therapy dog, and that dog will be undergoing training to be housed at Patasko. This is a, basically, what the district is willing to do is to have the dog, and we would, Stan Davis would pay for the training out of his grant money to support the dog, and then Ms. Winagel will be the dog's handler, so.
The dog has grown to know our baseball boys, baseball games all summer, and I think the kids at Patasko will love him.
So, and that's it, under business items.
I know we've got a therapy dog at the intermediate school and with one at Patasko.
In the middle school, too, right?
In the middle school, yeah.
In the middle school now, too?
Yep.
So.
That one's a little different, but, yeah. That one's a little, that one's a little different, but yes.
But if, if Kirkersville and Aetna are open to that as well, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And part of this motion is kind of stating, you feel this is a proper public purpose, paying for the training for this dog. That's part of the, the motion, so it's all.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion on any of the business items? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item eight, we have A and B, donations with thanks, and B, five-year forecast.
Motion approval?
Second.
Quickly, five-year forecast. I just updated from the November for the actual property tax, actual income tax. There really hasn't been any substantial changes. We did up the staffing some for future years, because we hired twelve last year, ten this year. So we did, I put additional staffing, I originally had five, now we kind of put the ten, all the years of forecast, because we're not getting smaller.
Nope.
So that's really the only big change, so I'm asking you to approve it, and then authorize submission to Higher Department Education. Can you answer any specific questions about the forecast, but it really hasn't changed much at all.
How about any updates on what it's looking like as far, as far as fair funding and the budget, though?
The House says pass the budget with the fair funding with the two thousand twenty-two values, still, still, that's what I'm thinking of, increasing it as the next step, so what's we're phasing it in. Still phasing it in, originally, the bill was to state eighteen cost, and hundred percent phase in. It was more beneficial to school districts to go with the twenty-two cost and do the partial phase in. So that's what the House has passed. The Senate, we don't know. So as you see, the revenue is still flat-lined for state essentially, because I don't know what they're going to do. You know, it's because the House doesn't, doesn't mean the Senate's going to do it, and then they come together in that committee, what comes out of it. So we're hoping, I mean, the House version was pretty good for us, some additional revenue, but until I know for sure, I didn't want to include it in the forecast, but.
Okay.
Do you have anything else besides that?
No, that's it. We were just excited that when Dewine proposed the two thousand eighteen, and when it came out of the House, two thousand twenty-two, that if the Senate upholds that, that will be, that will be great for the district.
Any other conversation? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item nine, superintendent's items. Dr. Perkins?
So I was hoping to be able to present our growth study tonight, but cooperative strategies is behind, so you're going to have to let that anticipation build till June. They promised me they'd have it next week, so I will prepare that with their findings and present that to the board in June. It'll be interesting to see where we're at here with all the developments and growth. Honestly, just, just exciting and positive things happening, so many events right now. Obviously, graduation is Saturday, so we're hoping and cautiously optimistic for good weather. And softball will be playing Friday, Pickerington. Our baseball team won last night in extra innings, so that's fantastic. They'll play next Tuesday at Waterson. Track districts are this week. They had field events, running events tonight, field events prelims last night during senior awards, and we'll have everything else, the finals on Saturday. So lots and lots of really great things going on, tons of musical performances. I mean, every night is filled with something awesome for kids, so just a lot of positivity at this time of year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Item ten, request to speak on non-agenda items. Mr. Clifford? Teamsters Local Four-Thirteen? Southwest-looking Education Association?
Yes. Hello again.
Hello.
Three times now. All right, Janie Trench. We'd like to address the challenges we face this school year in finding certified special education teachers for several of our classrooms. As you're aware, our area is experiencing a shortage of qualified special ed teachers. However, we strongly believe that forcing teachers who prefer to teach in gen ed classrooms to remain in special education assignments is not the solution. Our district has witnessed a high turnover of teachers, coupled with the need for additional teachers due to growth. It's essential that any teacher within the district has the opportunity to move into other positions if they desire to do so. By allowing teachers to transition into gen ed roles, we can prevent losing valuable educators from our district. Furthermore, throughout the year, we face challenges in providing special ed services to students who are newly identified as needing such support. We appreciate the responsiveness of Dr. Perkins, with whom we had a productive meeting regarding our concerns. Dr. Perkins informed us that Mr. Davis and other administrative staff have reviewed the number of students identified as needing special education services over the past few school years, and they're looking for trends. To ensure preparedness in educating newly identified students throughout the year, Dr. Perkins has committed to hiring the special education teaching staff needed to educate all special education students newly identified or already know. So a bunch of positive things there. It's crucial to create schedules, programs, and supports that accommodate these students and leave space for students to enter these classrooms throughout the year. By doing so, we can provide optimal support and opportunities for all of our students, especially those newly identified students needing quality special education services. We respectfully request the board's commitment to ensuring that next year begins with the highly qualified special education personnel and a special education program and staffing that acknowledges the likelihood of many students being newly identified as needing special ed services throughout the school year. Our special education teachers are valuable assets, and they have options to pursue opportunities elsewhere. It's imperative that we provide them with optimal working conditions, enabling them to deliver the best possible support and opportunities to our students. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working together to create an inclusive educational environment that meets the needs of all of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of employment of public employees and negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, we are adjourned to executive session at seven fifty-nine, and we will just have one item after we return.
We are returning to open session for Southwest-looking Board of Education at eight forty-one AM. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Item twelve, we have the evaluation of the superintendent and treasurer.